Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of September 22nd, 2022. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2022 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk posted on the township's website, and available here in the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the township civic clerk website, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a real call of board members and board township professionals, please.
Mr. Senator Mead, Mr. Peazin, Committee of Mendelcor absent, Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Peazin, excuse me, Mr. Scoville?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Lepati?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Maskey?
Here.
Mr. Vois?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Verdesde?
Here.
Mr. Heck?
Here.
Guys?
Here.
Excellent. Thank you, Michael. Okay, first up, we have a couple of consideration of meeting minutes. First up is the September 1st, 2022 Executive Session. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Okay, eligible members?
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Hashtag, Mr. Chicorelli, the mayor, the vice chair, and the chair.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any comments from the dais? You're in on roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mayor Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next is the regular meeting minutes of September 1st, 2022. May I have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, eligible members, same group?
Same as for the executive.
Thank you. Any comments from the dais? You're in on roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Going to abstain.
Mayor Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. We do not have consideration of any resolutions for consideration or Planning Board business. With that, we will go from business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. Please note there is a five-minute time limit if you would like to comment to the board on any item. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
David Brooks, Seven Winding Way. Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask you to consider, as well as all the planning board members, the idea of a long time ago when an applicant made a presentation, they would bring paper copies of at least the initial exhibits, meaning the proposal, maybe some of the existing conditions, three or four of the actual larger on phone board displays. And I'd like to ask the board to consider reinitiating that for applications, particularly for some of the ones that are coming up next month, because to be able to physically look at a board is helpful. Unfortunately, with the screens, if an applicant decides that they're going to shrink it or enlarge it, we lose track of what we are actually looking at. It becomes more difficult. And so I would simply ask that, since it appears that they produce these anyway, I've seen them at the Environmental Commission, if they could be asked to bring them and put them up so the public can have at least an opportunity before the meeting to look at them and to get a better sense of how the entire plan lays out as a proposal. And if everyone would be willing to do that, I think it would help. I know it would help my perspective, and other people have mentioned that it would be a helpful thing to initiate, and especially since it appears they're producing these things anyway.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Meryl Bisberg for Hickory Hill Road. At the EC meeting on 9-1, there was an executive committee meeting. The executive committee came back and announced that there was a plan to, there was discussion of having a resolution to ostensibly to ask applicants a couple weeks ahead to submit something in writing to the planning board, I think from the planner of the applicant, about what was going to be presented. So at the time, one of the warehouse applications had already been presented. There was another one coming in next week. Homestead Road has had its first application, presentation in May, May 13th. So my question is, I've been looking at the Homestead Road files. I don't see anything that asked Homestead Road to present anything. And I think there was also an announcement when you came back from executive committee that for Homestead Road, there would be, I'm sorry, just, for Homestead Road, in addition to submitting a plan two weeks ahead, there was discussion about the subdivision. And I know you were, you said at the time, Attorney Brinkman, that you were directed by the planning board to communicate with O'Grodnick. So it's two weeks until the planning board meeting. Have those communications taken place? They're just not posted? Or did I miss them, or?
Resolution was adopted and approved by the board. Applicant's been advised regarding the obligation. We'll see if he, it's 10 days before, is not yet up.
Is your communication to him?
Yes, I have communicated with applicant's counsel.
Okay. And is that on the files?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I will, however, for the record, Mr. Chairman, indicate the applicant's counsel has been told, A, about the existence of the resolution, and B, the conversations that I had with the board relative to other related matters. Okay?
So they know?
Yes.
Maria Janusek, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also Hillsborough Township property owner, block 86, lot 32155, Camplain Road. There have been applications before this planning board from applicants who were involved with Hillsborough Township's affordable housing requirements. And some of those applicants had settlement agreements with the township. Looking at the records that were provided for the public when the public meetings were going to be held, those settlement agreements are not part of the records that are provided. But the settlement agreement is very germane to the application. It identifies the subject property, states the fact that there was a zone change that was ordered by Judge Thomas C. Miller, and that the application is in regard to affordable housing. So I don't know why it was not included with the records that are made available on the website to members of the public for the public hearing. Is there a reason why the settlement agreement is not given, was not given to the public? And also, who is the custodian of that settlement agreement? What Hillsborough department?
They're not part of the record because they're not part of the application. They are part of the record. I believe they are in the custody of the township clerk.
I've noticed a lot of records that are back from 2015, 2017, that, I don't know how they connect, where the settlement agreement is showing that this is an application for affordable housing. How could it not be part of the application?
Not required to be part. There's already a zone in place.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
There's already a zone in place pursuant to the application. Let the record reflect the Committee of Mendelcor, right, at 7:43. And therefore, it's already been zoned. It's there in accordance with the zoning that's before the parties. If any of the members of the board want copies, they can request that of the planning department. If the public wants copies, I believe they are in the possession of the township clerk.
Only the township clerk? That's not a part of the, part of the record for that applicant?
The applicant, the settlement agreement is not part of the applicant's application. What comes from it, i.e. the zoning and the plan, are part of the application, and that's what's before this board.
Okay, so some of the applications that came before the board that were a part of the affordable housing requirement didn't show that they were for affordable housing. So how would someone know that there's a settlement agreement?
I'm unaware that any applicant who's been before this board regarding affordable housing, with the exception of one which is part, didn't have a settlement agreement, but was part of the Fair Share Housing Center settlement agreement, wasn't part of the settlement agreement for affordable housing.
Which one was that?
That would have been cost cutters.
That wasn't, that was not part of the settlement agreement, so that didn't have a settlement?
That was not a separate settlement agreement. It was part of the Fair Share Housing Agreement.
Okay. So in order to get these settlement agreements, someone would have to submit a request for government records through the Open Public Records Act?
You can ask the clerk, Mrs. Janusek.
I'm sorry, what?
You can ask the clerk's office for them. I'm assuming it's part of an Oprah request.
That has to be?
That's an issue you deal with the clerk. She's got possession of them, and she deals with them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public, matters not on the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to consideration of ordinances. We actually have two this evening, and I will, don't know who's going to take the lead, David or Eric?
I'll get it.
Okay.
Bring it up.
Oh, yes.
Start queued up. Okay. The first ordinance we'll be considering is Ordinance 2022-16. This was introduced by the Township Committee at their September 13th meeting. It's been referred to the planning board in accordance with the municipal land use law for formal comment. The Township Committee public hearing on the ordinance is scheduled for the October 11th meeting, their 11th meeting. This ordinance is actually a slightly revised version of an ordinance you considered back in June. That was 2022-10. That ordinance was not subsequently adopted by the Township Committee. It was revised and reintroduced as Ordinance 2022-16 that you have before you tonight. The initial ordinance, and this is the primary difference, was sort of a blanket approach. We took all the CDZ and O5 properties that were a subject of the ordinance and just made them all blanket RA. So we were instructed to go back and take a little closer look at it. And the map you have up now is, represents the revised version. So what's the same as the original ordinance is the properties to the, I don't know if you can see that, to the north, basically Sacred Heart Cemetery and an adjoining contractor facility. They were already partially in the RA zone. They were part CD, part RA. So we still, the ordinance still would rezone them to RA. In the bottom left-hand corner, you see another CDZ which would go to RA. That's a farm that for some reason is split in two between CDZ and RA. So that would go entirely into CDZ. The more orange-looking properties, those five properties, they're all on the west side of Millstone River Road and they, but the R zone, which basically is in between those properties. So the revision is to establish consistency to the zoning on the west side of Millstone River Road so that those properties would all be rezoned to R instead of RA. The rest of the ordinance is basically the same as the initial one. There's no changes to any requirements or boundaries of any of the existing, the remaining zones. As we discussed earlier, what happens to the remainder of the CDZ zone, what's left of it, and a little bit of the O5, that would be the subject of future amendments. But this ordinance basically just addresses those eight properties. The two on the north, again, would go from a split zone of CDZ and RA to all RA. The bottom left-hand corner, from a split zone, again, CDZ, RA to all RA. And the, the orange properties on the west side of Millstone Road are all currently zoned O5. They would all be switched to R, so they would match the R zone that's in between them. That's it in a nutshell. I can answer any questions you might have.
I guess for the benefit of the public and those viewing, just real briefly, what goes into CDZ, O5 versus R and RA?
Yeah, the CDZ, and I'll backtrack a little bit. We, the planning department did an analysis of the CDZ, O5 zone. It has shrunk over the years. It used to run all the way down the railroad, all the way down to Montgomery. It's been reduced in size over the years. The CDZ zone can be traced back pretty much to when I-95 was supposed to come through here. So it was an office park type of zone. Obviously, times have changed, and the viability or the, of big corporate office parks really isn't there anymore. There have been other fairly substantial zone changes over the last few years where the Royceburg Golf Course, which was a split CDZ, O5, went to a Royceburg planned residential development zone. Glengarry went from mining to residential 8A. So these are sort of outlier parcels, what's left of CDZ and O5, both really geared towards, towards more larger corporate office-type development. This would change at least these first eight parcels to basic single-family residential.
Okay. Comments from the dais?
Paul, board.
To the public, so we have a motion, open to public.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, question about this particular ordinance? And just also for the public, the planning board is not making decision to pass or approve this. It's strictly, we comment and make a recommendation to Township Committee. Township Committee is the one that gets to have the final decision on it.
Robert Kralovich, 291 Amwell Road, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Question on the, on the lower right-hand side, the O5, how come you're splitting that O5 for half to be changed to RA and the other half to stay O5? Isn't that what I'm saying?
Where I'm pointing to now?
Yeah. You have that, O5 is all the way to the left, isn't it? Goes all the way to that line of CDZ?
O5 goes to this line, yes, that's.
How come we're only doing half of that?
We're taking, the road, we're taking to the east side of.
For whose benefit?
We're just still study, we're still studying the balance of the zones to see what, we haven't decided, the board hasn't decided what goes on to the rest of the property.
Okay, 'cause that's what I'm seeing, I'm kind of seeing like.
These are the more obvious ones, if you would.
Right. And you had mentioned the farm over on, over by Clerco. That is the, the yellow CDZ there. You said you're changing that to CDZ?
Right now, no, no, no. It is currently split between CDZ and RA. It's going to go all RA now.
Southeast to RA? So that's that whole farm?
The entire thing. You see where I'm pointing now?
Yeah.
That's RA.
Right.
This is CDZ, but this is all the same property.
It's all same for, yeah.
For some reason, it was split years ago. So we're just making it all RA now.
All right. And then, so, but I'm still, like, you're, we're trying to eliminate O5, aren't we? Like, kind of seems like in the map, you're trying to take away O5, but you're leaving.
Basically, that will be changed to something else, right? Something more appropriate.
Do we have an idea what more, might be more appropriate of an O5?
That is to be discussed yet. There was a report prepared last May that laid out some possibilities, but it's, that's for further discussion.
Is that the same property owner, that whole, that whole tract right there?
Which one?
The one on the bottom right, the one that's split in half, I'm sorry. The, back to O5, the bottom one.
I believe it's, yeah, it's one lot.
No, no, not the farm, over to the right.
Here?
That one there, that, that lower O5.
It's three, actually, the county owns this small piece that's a leftover from when they did the road work. And there's three different lots here, different owners.
Okay. And then, I just want to, the cemetery, that's, that's O5 as well?
Like, which cemetery? The big one or the small?
The small one, the same.
St. Peters and Paul?
Yeah.
That's currently, that's right here, that's O5. That's going to go to R.
That's going to go to RA?
R.
R, just straight R.
Correct.
And what are the restrictions, once you put that lower piece of property, 40, what are going to be the restrictions on 40 when you make it R? Like, what can be built in R?
Single-family homes.
That's it?
Resident, yeah.
No warehouses, no commercials?
It's the same zone that's, you see the Claremont neighborhood here?
Yes.
It's the same zone as that.
Okay. All right, that's my question. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
I don't agree.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Tony Galupo, 44 Franklin Drive.
Tony, pick the mic up a little higher for the people in the back. I can hear you, but the people in the back can't, so.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I live right up in the Claremont section, abutting the 1170 Millstone River Road. That's part of what's being rezoned from. The original letter we received spoke to, and I know you tried to explain it a little, I'm just asking for a little bit more detail. What was the consideration between RA and R? Meaning, RA would have been something that required two-acre properties, a minimum number of houses if you had to develop any of that at all. And now that almost cuts it back down to one-acre properties or an additional amount of people and homes and impervious surface and that type of thing, which is a big concern for that area. So let me just start with that easiest question is, when you talk about a detailed analysis, I'm sure you did a lot of work to come up with the RA. So what changed that made you go back and say, you know what, maybe RA isn't the best, maybe just R should do? Can I, I don't, maybe you don't have to divulge that information? I'm just, as somebody who was there before and read up and did all the detail work on what RA was, and then now it's changed again, I just want to know why that is.
It's really, it's more of a, for a consistency standpoint, and that if anything were to be developed on those properties, it would match the abutting zone. Now, that being said, yes, it would be the same exact requirements that the Claremont neighborhood has in terms of what you can or can't build. But without public water and sewer, it would still be held to two acres.
Okay.
So unless the developer could come in and install public water and sewer, it's still held to two acres.
Okay. When you take those into consideration, whether it be R or RA, does the existing flood plans in effect right now, are they taken into account as to how many people you want to have in the way if there is an emergency when it comes to flooding in that area?
Well, with any zone, if somebody came in with a development plan for any property, they have to consider all that. They have to address all of that to the satisfaction of the board engineer. When you, when you rezone any property throughout any township, you don't do an environmental analysis of every property. You look at the overall context, what's next door, what seems more appropriate if it were to be developed, would it match what's next to it? Now, obviously, some of these properties may or may not be developed once you go through the environmental evaluation of them.
Okay. That's the last part, because I just want to make sure that as the planning board, you're looking at all of the properties that are coming into play in that area. Toll Brothers, which is something that has already through the process, is redirecting the water that comes through the middle of the Claremont neighborhood to that, just on the other side of that parcel of land, which now is planned for a warehouse, which is terrible. But even a neighborhood might not be enough either to kind of limit that, that impact or flow. But I guess the final thing that I wanted to say was, when you're making those changes, was there any communication between the boards that say, I understand, you think it might be RA, or, but now we have to change it to R? Like, was that a, what prompted that? Was there new information received that when you looked at it, said, well, now that we have this, obviously the, I'm just trying to find a way to say, well, we kind of rushed through the first one, and now we're trying to fix it now. It matters because it's about the information we receive in the panel? You haven't seen me in 18 years since I've lived here. The only time I come is when you call. So this is what I'm trying to say, is that we want to put our trust in this process and say, you know, we keep interrupting, and maybe if you just let us get to the approvals, you'll say no. But there's a risk. And I think that that's the concern, at least myself and the folks of the Claremont neighborhood, are very concerned about. So when it looks like now minor tweaks are being changed, it still looks like there's plans for back there. And it just creates a little bit of uncertainty for everybody that is at least involved in that process. But I thank you for answering my question, because it was detailed. And thank you for the opening of that before we started, because we got rid of a couple of questions.
Okay.
But I just want you all to know that I appreciate the efforts of what you're trying to do in this. Hopefully, it all comes out for everybody and be happy. But thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Meryl Bisberg for Hickory Hill Road. So my understanding is that the master plans are reexamined, at least formally, every 10 years. So the last reexamination was 2018. But this particular grouping, or I should say, study area, you know, four years later, is now being looked at with a fine-tooth comb. And I know you have an extensive study when you did this. So if we waited until 2022 to do the reexamine for just this area, and, you know, as Tony said, just a couple of months ago, we were going to rezone some of these to RA that are now becoming R, what changed? I mean, I know that on September 1st or 8th, there was discussion about 1170 Millstone Road, having a date on the calendar for their application. So.
Yeah, this, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with 1170 Millstone River Road or any other development application. It's, again, it's just fine-tuning an approach. It matches the adjoining neighborhood to a T in terms of zoning. There's nothing, the 1170 Millstone River Road that you're referring to, yeah, that, that beat the clock, no matter what we did. The purpose of this, and this was included in the reexamine report, the reexamine report said that this area of the town needed to be studied. We've done that. The intention is to, for lack of a better term, downzone the entire area from what it was. Again, it's a remnant of I-95. So we're trying to, and let's be clear, they are in RA. They're both residential. They're exactly the same uses. One is a one-acre, one is a two-acre zone. However, without public water and sewer, it's, it reverts to two acres anyway. So there's not a major difference between the two zones. It's not like it's going to permit some kind of massive development that you wouldn't get in the RA. They're small properties to begin with. But it wasn't urged on by any particular application. The 1170 Millstone Road isn't going to be affected by this one way or the other.
So that application is going to be considered?
They beat the clock, yeah, in terms of, right, when they got in and were complete, yeah.
Okay. Can you build affordable housing in RA?
You can build it anywhere.
Well, you have to rezone, but you.
No, necessarily. I mean, you can build housing, a single-family house can be an affordable house. It's not, doesn't have to be garden apartments.
I know, and I hope that comes up tonight with Glengarry, actually.
Yeah. There's no prohibition against pricing of units in any zone. Now, as you know, we've done some rezoning specific to affordable housing as a result of certain settlement agreements. The M&amp;M that's on tonight, that is the, that rezoning was done to satisfy a court order. But, yeah, I mean, you can build affordable housing in any residential zone.
So, so again, except for the size of the lot, of the individual lots, there isn't really much difference between RA and R?
No, it's the same, same permitted use, list of permitted uses, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good.
Sizengala Ford Hunt Club Road. The rezoning on Millstone River Road, north of the Claremont Development, that orange one, yeah, that one, is that, does that include the 1170 Millstone River Road application that's already in?
Yes.
So this zoning doesn't really affect that application because they beat it in, no matter?
Correct.
Even though it apparently wasn't quite ready. Even though it apparently wasn't quite ready. So even though you're making it R, RA, it would still be, they're still eligible to put in the warehouse, or they're light industrial, or whatever they're calling it?
Warehouse is not permitted, they're calling it light industrial, which was, is yet to be, okay, addressed.
Yes, to be determined.
To be determined, correct. But, right, this would, for anything going future, it would be, they'd have to follow the R standards.
Okay. If the 1170 light industrial was turned down, would that then become an R, RA?
It becomes, it will be, if the township committee adopts the ordinance, this becomes R residential, period. Doesn't matter what happens to the 1170 application, it becomes residential. Now, they're grandfathered in because they got their application in before the ordinance was changed, but going forward, so let's say that application is denied, or withdrawn, or whatever, from that day forward, it has to be single-family housing.
Okay, good. When you change the zoning there, does that change, I know you said it depends on what's being offered, does it automatically change the impervious coverage numbers? Does R and RA have an impervious coverage number?
They're all, they're all, it would be whatever their impervious coverage is for R, which is obviously less than 05.
Okay, so it would be. The other one is, the one that's against the borough of Millstone, that one, yes.
Yeah, the two-family house on that one?
Yeah, the two-family house on the front, that was originally the Timco family parcel.
Yes.
Um, okay, so that is the one that, the house is separate now from
Yes.
what was formerly the Timco family.
Existing two-family house was here, then they, it was subdivided basically by the county when they put the road extensions in. The two-family house, about a year or two ago, was granted, they came in and cleaned it up. That was granted a use variance, it's an existing non-conforming to two families, so that would stay there. The other two properties are vacant at the moment.
Okay, 'cause I remember there was some discussion about what they were willing to have put into their deed. Like, could they just have it as a farm, format? Could they have housing there? Could they have, and they went back and forth on that one?
Yeah, I don't recall.
Okay, thank you.
David Brooks, Seven Winding Way. I'm confused. I'm really confused, and maybe Mr. Maskey can help with this one. If you're zoning a lot as residential, but you're gonna build a warehouse, or some light industrial warehouse-type thing, what's the point of rezoning it to residential? Is it because in 20 years, when you tear it down, you're gonna build a house? I don't think so. I don't understand.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I think he just answered the question before. He said, assume that the application is withdrawn, or denied, or something else transpires, at that point, this application, that application is grandfathered, but beyond that, it would be what we change the zone to. So should there be any change, then it would be, it would be covered under the residential zone.
But it's.
Well, let me think, there's two primary reasons to, when you zone a property. One is to either accept what's on the property as a beneficial use, and you wanna continue it, or to direct it, to move it in another direction, something more beneficial. The whole purpose of this, and 1170 Millstone Road is sort of a creature unto itself, let's say. Okay, we looked at this comprehensively, the entire district, and we said, okay, 05 doesn't, offices don't make sense here anymore, corporate development parks don't make any sense anymore. What makes sense here? Single-family residential development, similar to what's there now. That's what we're doing. Now, things will happen on the sidelines. We have a light commercial property, you know, application in. That doesn't mean you don't change, that doesn't mean you have to accept that and keep it as 05, or zone it, like, you don't want us to zone it light industrial to accommodate what might be coming down the road. We're changing it, unfortunately, we didn't change it soon enough, if you will, they beat the clock, it's laying you slow, we're stuck with that. However, going forward, if whatever happens on that property, from here forward, it will be a single-family development. That's what, and if that's what the planning board and the township committee think that's good policy for the township, that's what they'll adopt, regardless of what's being proposed now. So it's, you're using zoning to say, we either don't like what's on there now, which is 05, or perhaps what might be coming down the road. What we want there is a single-family home. So we're gonna rezone it and let the cards play out from there.
Does that have any bearing upon the application? I take it not.
No, no, as we said, they beat the clock. There's a clock under the initial landing, so once you're, you have your application in, and it's declared complete, whatever the zoning is at that time, they are, they can stay with that. But as was said, if, if for some reason that application is turned down, or for whatever reason they withdraw it, then going forward, whoever touches that property has to follow the residential standards.
And are you, as the planning director, privileged to talk with these folks if this does get rezoned, to suggest that maybe there's a better use of the land?
No, I don't talk to them about that, no. I think it's evident, the township, if they do, and I don't make these decisions, if the township zones it single-family residential, that's a pretty good signal to the owner of the property that that's what they prefer to see there.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Maria Janusik. So as Mr. Brooks said, this is very confusing. So that warehouse, right now, is, is considered a permitted use in that zone?
It is not.
It is, because it was grandfathered, as it was already explained. So yes.
And it hasn't been through the, even the planning process?
It was grandfathered.
It has, because, well, right now, it's a permit, it's because the zone hasn't changed. Well, let me just, let me just clarify one thing. Warehouses, warehouses are not permitted uses in the 05 zone. They have come in, and they are trying to make the case that this is not a warehouse, that it's a, like, like manufacturing, light manufacturing is permitted. They are saying it's a light manufacturing building. They're not before the board yet, when they get here, if and when they get here, they're gonna have to make that case to the board, and if it's accepted or not. So right now, it's, it's not technically being proposed as a warehouse, which is not permitted in the 05 zone, let alone the R zone. But that's, that's yet to be determined, when, if and when they get here, probably next year.
Okay, but it's so bizarre, because they wanna build a warehouse, but they're saying it's not a warehouse. And so warehouse is not a permitted use in that zone. But now, if you're gonna change the zone, and they're coming in as being grandfathered, then they can be grandfathered in the new zone.
They come, their application comes in and has to comply with the light industrial zone requirements. Nothing more.
Their application is in currently, so they get the benefit of what the zone is at the time they submitted their application.
Okay, and they're claiming.
So they're not grandfathered in perpetuity, but for the application that they've submitted, it's subject to what the zone currently is.
So they have to stay within the CDZ zone of permitted use, permitted uses?
05.
And also conditional uses? And they're trying to say that they're light industry, not a warehouse.
Folks, as Mr. Maskey just noted, that's the case, they have to make.
And I think we need not to start talking about an application that's scheduled here, because that can cause all kinds of problems down the road. Let's stick to questions about the merits of changing these properties, their zones. That's, we need to limit that conversation.
Changing the CDZ zone, which does, does connect with that application. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? We have another ordinance, 'cause I'm sure you're up.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Come on, make it quick. We'll see.
Okay, back to the place that might be located 1170, but we're not naming a specific one.
And we're not, and we're not discussing any aspect of it, folks. Frankly, for all intents and purposes, this board has already gone probably too far in certain situations in this discussion. There's an application currently before this board regarding a property on Millstone River Road that will have to make its own merit and its own contentions at the time it's ultimately heard by this board, based upon the zoning that was in existence at the time of the submission, that the application was deemed complete. If you, if the public doesn't like that piece of the puzzle, go complain to the legislature, who changed the law from time of decision to time of application several years ago at the behest of the developers. All yours, Susan.
I think I got yelled at. Okay, if, if that is rezoned, but somebody gets an approval for a light industrial, can they then sell the property to someone else, saying, already approved for light industrial, or would it revert back to the R, RA?
They could sell it. If, if it were approved.
For that specific use.
Yes, it would go with the land.
It goes with the land, okay, thank you.
Just like any other approval goes with the land.
Motion to close public.
Is there a second?
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any last round of discussion from the dais? Okay, counselor?
Board is, the board is determining whether or not it wishes to recommend to the township committee the proposed ordinance in its current form.
Do I need a motion?
Motion?
Need a motion? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that it makes sense, it's consistent with the neighborhood nearby, and it's independent of any other thing going on here. So it makes sense, I'd make a motion to approve.
No, motion to recommend.
Oh, to recommend, sorry.
We don't approve.
Motion to recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I think everyone has said their piece, so we will go to roll call.
Mr. Ryker?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Hessdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Chikarali?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Committee Member in Court?
I don't think you can refuse, you can abstain.
Can I abstain? Thank you, for correcting.
It's too late, you're already, we're up for the discussion.
I haven't relinquished the mic yet. Abstain.
Committee Member in Court? Yes. Meryl Pani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Suraj?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for a short recess.
Okay.
Before you get to the next ordinance.
All right, I know that clock's a little fast. I've got 8:15 here, so five minutes.
I would say five, maybe a little more, but at least five.
All right, we'll reconvene at 8:25.
Thank you.
And next up, we have conservation of ordinance 2022-17. David, or David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with the municipal land law, the township committee has referred the township ordinance 22-17 to the planning board for formal comment. Consistency with the township master plan and any other matter the board deems complete. The ordinance was introduced by the township committee at their September 13 meeting. The proposed ordinance amends Section 188-3 of the Hillsborough Development Regulations Ordinance by defining a large-format supermarket and amends Section 188-107.1 Light Industrial, LI, District by adding large-format supermarkets to the permitted principal uses, along with related bulk and design standards. Additionally, the LI District is proposed to include standards for freestanding restaurant, drive-through facilities, and add retail sales of goods and personal service establishments to the list of permitted conditional uses. So it's now in your court?
Okay. No props?
No props today.
Okay. Okay. So I guess what prompted making the revision?
I'm sorry?
What prompted the revision?
There was a request made for us to look at this as being a possible use in the zone. The LI District is a, is a very interesting zone. It's light industrial, but there have been many uses added over the years that have diversified all the different types of uses, including commercial-related. There has been limitations on the retail side of things in that zone. However, home improvement, retail, is something that is permitted in the zone, and as it's defined, is kind of a larger box retail, and that's the closest example to something like a large-format supermarket.
From the dais, questions? I guess we'll open to public.
Motion open? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So just like last time, if anyone would like to come up and comment or question about this proposed ordinance or zoning change, feel free to come to the mic.
My only question is, really similar question to Chairman Surachi's, Meryl Visberg, sorry, Meryl Visberg for Hickory Hill Road. Similar question. In response to Chairman Surachi, you said the request, there was a request to look at this use because of limitations on commercial use in the LI zone. If, where did the request come from, if it didn't come through the planning board? When you said there was a request from the township committee, from, I mean?
There was a request from the property owner.
Oh, so then this is, so there's a relation to a particular property, is what you're saying?
There is, there is a property owner that asked, inquired about a possible change, yes.
Okay. And kind of pursuant to the last ordinance, where the, with the property is so critical on these things, can you say anything about where the, which property it is?
Well, what I would like to specify is, the zone, the uses that are being proposed to be permitted uses would be uses that would be permitted throughout the entire zone, and not for one particular property.
I understand, I understand, but it's, it's, it still came from a particular zone.
Right.
So.
Okay, it's the corner of Homestead Road and Route 206. I apologize, I just don't have the block and lot number for you.
South corner, north corner?
Uh, south, southeast.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Robert Kralovich, 291 Amell Road. Didn't really come to talk tonight, but I'm just now listening, but, so, if they wanna build a large supermarket in a, in a light commercial zone, light industrial zone, what is gonna be the impervious surface for a supermarket? Like, if you take, if you take something like a Wise, all the way down to Coles, to Lowes, you basically took that whole property and made it, you know, flow into those tension bonds. If they build one over there by 206, what's that gonna create? Like, I'm just, like, for the planning part, that's gonna, that would have to move forward, what's the consideration from you guys to say, eh, it's probably not a good idea to have a large-scale supermarket? Like, you had Staples, what, now a doctor's office? So is that gonna change to where, yeah, it's ShopRite today, but tomorrow is gonna be Robert Wood Johnson? Like, is there anything that's gonna stop that in the LI zone?
To answer your first question, there's very minimal standards that are being proposed to change. In other words, the existing bulk standards, impervious coverage, and things like that, that's not being proposed to change. What's being proposed is additional uses being added. There is a slight design standard in terms of the location of parking, but other than that, there are very minimal design standards, and also bulk standards being, that would be proposed to change for this. To answer your second question, in order for something to change from one use to another, even after an approval, say, through a site plan, it would go through the zoning officer, and there would be a review in terms of making sure that it's a permitted use. And one additional thing that a zoning officer has to look at is any conditions And, one additional thing that a zoning officer has to look at is any conditions of approval that are associated with their original development of the property. So there's a number of things to look at.
Yeah, 'cause variances seem to be given out quite easily in the town lately. Like, somebody wants a bulk variance or this variance, it's like, "Oh, we want this variance." Okay, everybody seems to move to the variance because they need that to build a certain something or whatever they're building. So, like, they say, "Okay, this is, this is this zone for the supermarket," or, you know, 'cause that's what we're talking about, a large-scale supermarket, as the paperwork says.
Correct.
Yeah, but the, the one thing I want to point out, David, I, I know you touched on it, but, but it, it kind of is similar to what is already permitted there, it's just not specifically supermarket, correct?
Correct. So, for example, of basically a large-scale building for retail purposes, but basically only selling home improvement products is already something that's allowed.
So, on the same spot, you could build a supermarket, you could build a Home Depot. So I'm not sure it changes, it, it's just allowing now a supermarket use instead of a, something like a home improvement store, large-scale.
A different retail avenue.
Yeah, correct, uh, the, right.
Now, that will go, that, so if that gets approved for that, for that zoning itself, then all the way through, that can happen anywhere where there is, you know, like, commercial? Or light industrial.
LI, light industrial zone, correct. It, it would be a use that would be permitted throughout the zone.
Okay, all right, that's all.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Robert Harris, 13 Hunt Club Road. So, what was implied in the first question, I think, is that we haven't approved, we haven't even received an application for a supermarket, but we've gone out of our way to allow that, where it wasn't allowed before. Looking at it another way, could a resident request that zoning be changed to prevent something in the future? Could we, could we have, could we have requested a change to the zoning to specifically not allow a Home Depot?
Property owners can make all sorts of requests to the township. The public can participate in the public process and be engaged and make all sorts of requests. For this particular type of request, one of the things that we had to look at, we had to look at the consistency of the zone. We had to look at, is something like this, could this possibly fit within the zone in terms of its character? And, as I had stated previously, yes, entitled, the zone is called LI, Light Industrial. However, it is a zone that is different from some of our other industrial zones, because it does have a very diverse range of uses that include some commercials, some personal service establishments, a number of, a variety of, of type of, of uses. And what makes this zone different than some of our other industrial zones is specifically the, you know, Home Depot type of use is specifically stated and defined, a home improvement center is defined in that. And so when we started looking at that, we've started comparing to a, a large-format supermarket. But I do want to emphasize, and also what Committeeau Delcourt said, is, the use is being proposed to be added, however, the rest of the bulk standards. So right now, anyone can come in, and if they have a permitted use, they could propose a development that's all within the bulk standards that that zone already has.
Okay. I'm done, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I request that the back door get closed? I'm getting some feedback.
It, it locks, though.
Okay.
The door's not unlocked. It, I, you know, it got locked up.
Thank you, Mr. Brook.
Good evening, thank you. Allison Whitman, 8 DeWitt Lane. Hopefully, straightforward question. What zone is currently a large-format supermarket permitted in?
So that use, so in, in all of our other uses, it would be classified as a retail use.
Retail. So this expands the area in which large-format supermarket can be built and shot?
So, no. What I would like to emphasize is, large-format supermarket is being defined, and the only zone that it's being proposed to be a permitted use is in the LI zone. So this would not be impacting all the rest of the zones throughout the township. And throughout the township, essentially, that type of use, for example, the promenade, where the Wise is currently, that's treated as, as retail.
Okay, I just wanted to see a clarification of where it had been previously allowed to, how this changes it, and will it only be light industrial now, or it'll also be retail?
Right, so hopefully I'll answer it, and please, if, if you don't understand, please ask me for clarification. So in this zone, one of the permitted use, uses that's being proposed is a large-format supermarket, which means that throughout the zone, someone could propose a large-format supermarket in the LI district. This does not impact the rest of the zones throughout the township. Does that...
I guess I was just asking, before this adjustment, where could you build the large-format supermarket?
In any zone that permits retail.
Okay, that was my question, sorry.
And then, sorry. So, and, but, but in addition to that, you would have to look at some of the bulk standards in a particular zone to see if it would really be feasible.
Okay.
Because there are limitations as you go from one property to another, and when you look at bulk standards.
Understood, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
David Brook, 7 Winding Way. Question. The, if, if there was to have something built there, does the, does this ordinance, because I didn't see every wording, does it provide specifics with regards to setbacks and other specifics relating to where you can build? Because what we're, what's happening at some point on that corner, as you know, on Homestead, there's currently three proposed warehouses that are being considered by you folks. The traffic that would be generated by those warehouses is gonna come out to 206. Traffic from a large-format supermarket is also going to create lots of traffic on 206. At some point, I think the township's going to own that. And is there any planning component of this ordinance that's going to provide for a wider space? Because I would suggest that we're going to have to widen 206 for the traffic flow that could be generated by all the tractor-trailers and all of the cars that are gonna go to a large-format supermarket.
As Mr. Maskey had stated earlier, when it comes to zoning, when it comes to adding uses, nothing is gonna take the place of the, of the board, or any board, looking at any di, application on its own merit in terms of how it fits in with everything else. The purpose of zoning is to look at it throughout the entire zone and see if it, if it fits in general. How it fits in a particular property, again, nothing will take the place of it being looked at by the board and looking at all the factors. And as I als, have also stated numerous times, again, this could go in numerous locations throughout the LI districts.
No, I, I appreciate that. I guess my question was, when we set up a particular use, typically there are setbacks with regards to each zone, and I don't know what that is and whether that's changing. If you increase the use of a, of a, of a piece of property, you change the demands put upon it, whether this provides for, I guess you could say, different setback requirements so that the road could be widened if there's that much traffic.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So, none of the bulk standards are being changed for the zone. It's simply proposing to add the use to the zone, meaning it would have to comply with all the existing bulk standards that are already in the zone. So the entire variety of uses that are allowed in that zone, including home improvement centers, it would already have to comply with all of those.
Okay, I, I guess I, I was only asking whether, whether there should be a recommendation as part of this ordinance to, because it's a more intensive use, to...
Than a home improvement store?
Hey, you ever go to ShopRite on a Saturday morning?
Did you ever go to Home Depot on a Saturday?
Point well taken. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm not the planner, I'm just simply saying...
Yeah, I, I, I think from my perspective, and I, I appreciate your ques, the, I, I don't see much of a distinction in, in sort of intensity i, if you had a large home improvement store, or if you had a large format supermarket. To me, they, they are, they're, they're pretty similar in their, in their demand on, on the, on the surrounding area, and those bulk standards are already in place, considering, you know, that that option is available. So, I think to, to add a very similar use with, with little real distinction in, in how it would, it would flow from a, from a usage perspective, I don't think it, it would warrant us looking at major changes to all of the bulk standards for that particular zone.
So long as it can accommodate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just my concern, because if you're going from, well, right now, let's face it, there's nothing there, but if you're going to a more intensive use, you just want to make sure that it's planned to accommodate the demand.
And also, it's not for one zone, it's for all light industrial zones. So remember, this isn't, even though we're maybe specific keyholeing one site here, this is for all LI, so it's, it's, it's not a particular spot zone.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, when are we gonna get a Trader Joe's here?
Start a petition.
Thank you.
Mayor Lepanti, you just said that applies to all, all LI zones? How many LI zones are there?
I don't know that.
Well, there's one, there's one zone, but multiple properties.
Multiple properties.
Correct.
I'm sorry, what?
So, when you look at the zoning map, sometimes there's zones that are in multiple places. The LI zone is, is different from that. The LI zone is composed of, of basically itself, it's just one zone. There's not multiple locations all throughout the town. This is one area that's all LI.
And where is that LI zone?
So the LI borders on Route 206, and it's all per our zoning map.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Striker Lane, let's see here.
Goes all the way back, yeah, to behind.
Right.
So it's just that area that is the LI, light industrial zone?
Correct.
And that is, that is its own zone, LI, it isn't, it, because that, that statement was very confusing, because I know there is the I-1, I-2, I-3, light industrial zones, and the LI is its own zone. In regard to this ordinance B, it says permitted principal uses, all uses shall be provided at a scale and size that is appropriate for the district. How you know, or where is the determination as to the scale and size that's appropriate?
So again, it's, it's all going to depend on, on the property. There's a whole variety of factors to look at. One of the things I also would like to emphasize in that, in defining this large-format supermarket, there is a limit of how large that it can go. But nothing, again, to emphasize, there's nothing that's gonna take the place of looking at the property, of whichever property someone decides to propose a large-format supermarket. There's a number of factors that are going to have to, that this board, or any board, would have to look at, and all the professionals included.
So you don't have a definite limit of, can't be larger than two football fields or whatever?
So right now, the large-format supermarket says, "A retail establishment devoted principally to the sale of food, as well as other convenience and household goods containing a minimum gross-floor area of 75,000 square feet." There's other things that are also, play a factor in limiting how large something may be. It has to do with parking, has to do with access with the site, any kind of environmental constraints on a property. All of those play factors into how large or how small something may, may be on a property. Including traffic, and, you know, there's a whole variety of things to have to look at.
Okay, so, I think, I think number seven here regarding permitted uses. There's warehousing, shipping, and receiving, is there a limit on the size of the warehouse that can be built in this LI, light industrial zone?
So that's not part of this ordinance, so the, the way the ordinance is set up, anything that's basically underlined is the, is what's being proposed as part of the ordinance. The, all the rest of the section of the ordinance, that's everything that's already in LI. Those are already things that are, are permitted. So when you, when you look through here, when you look through ordinance 2022-17, anything, again, anything that's underlined is new. Everything else that you see here, like the use you just referred to, that's already allowed in LI zone. That, that's not part of, that's not part of this discussion, that's, that's not being considered.
So the only thing you want, you wanted to consider, only thing that you are considering on this is that large-format supermarket?
Well, large-format supermarket, and as I said in a little bit of my summary, it also talks about adding some standards to the restaurants and the drive-through.
That's underlined here?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, all right, thank you.
Any comments from the public?
Motion to close public.
You got a motion, a second?
We got a motion, a second. You were second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any continued discussion from the dais?
Pleasure of the board.
Well, I mean, one of the things that I was, when I was reading this, with the, you know, some of the permitted uses and considering, some of the things that the state has provided, some illustrious guidelines, that there may be an opportunity here to look at those and Get some definitions around the W-word?
The bad W-word? It's a good word, bad word.
One option available, based on that comment, Mr. Chairman, would be to recommend to the board, pardon me, to the township committee, the approval of the ordinance, but for the township committee to take a long, hard look at certain permitted uses, for example, warehouses, in conjunction with the newly promulgated state guidelines regarding same.
Just in the LI zone?
At this point, they could then decide what they want to do about the others. That's what's before this board is the LI zone.
Okay. As someone that would have to look at that, when it, when it comes back, I think that, that certainly seems to be something, given the recent guidelines, we should, we should look to undertake, and see if there are any revisions that we, we might want to make. That's probably a, a recommendation that this board should, I would consider, should make back up.
I would agree.
I'd agree, but just for clarification, Mr. Meskey, and I, I'd agree for all zones, but, did you say earlier that warehouses are exempt from the LI zone right now?
No.
No, they're permitted.
Oh, so that, I agree then. Thanks.
So how would that be phrased, going back to the township committee? And I guess I defer to Mr. Bernstein for that.
The resolution would be for the, the planning board would recommend the adoption of ordinance 2022-17, and request that the township committee review the permitted use of warehousing in the LI zone pursuant to the state planning commission's guidelines on warehouses. on warehouses.
Then we would come back and make any adjustments at that point.
And that would then be up to the Township Committee what it wished to do thereafter. I remind the board, as you, the chairman reminded previously, you, all you do is recommend, one way or another, you don't make the ordinances per se.
So that's a motion to recommend?
If you want to make it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, so we have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any final discussion? Okay, we'll go to roll call then.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Doppo?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Kritim and Delcor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Okay, you? Okay.
And David?
Okay, we are through considerations of ordinance this evening, so now we are moving to public hearing on applications.
Believe they're outside.
Go knock on the door, let them in.
Does someone want to get the applicant? No, leave them outside. Unless they're watching, you know, Aaron Judge's pursuit.
Updates?
Dealers. No. Watching the dealers.
So how's Aaron Judge doing? I hope you guys been watching the game. Okay.
You guys did clutch it, did you? No.
Yeah.
Only the Mets done that so far.
Yeah.
Why should I text me if he's home?
Okay.
So if you start jumping up and down, we know, it's not, we know what it is.
Okay, so we have moved to public hearing. Application M&amp;M Realty Partners of Hillsborough LLC, West Track with a file number of 21-PB-16-MSV with a time of decision of September 30th, 2022, and this application is continued from the July 28th, 2022 Planning Board meeting without further notice. I will turn it over to you, Counselor, and you can perhaps-
Mr. Chairman.
Briefly remind everybody the application.
Doug Wolfson for the applicant. When we were here last time, the board, through the chair and the mayor, other members of the professional staff, Mr. Hay and Mr. Maskey, asked us to gather certain information, and to run down some questions that members of the board had. There were a number of things, predominantly, as I remember, environmental issues. We endeavored to do that, we filed all that information, and we sent it into the professionals and the town. Having done that, I believe where we were was that Craig had not yet been questioned by the public, and so we are prepared to proceed on that basis, and assuming the chair agrees, open to the public raised questions.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
If the board has issues, or the professionals do, we stand ready to comply.
Mr. Chairman, I have two issues. One is board procedure, and one is substantive. For purposes of the record, Mr. Hestag, who is not present at the July 28th meeting-
You need to speak up a little bit, sorry.
Sorry. Mr. Hestag was not present at the July 28th meeting, has signed a certification of absent board member, that he reviewed the video recording of that meeting, and therefore is eligible to participate. Subsequent to your submission, your client's submission of its application, Mr. Wolfson, it has become apparent to planning, et cetera, that multiple lots in the proposed application are outside the sewer service area. My understanding, and Mr. Maskey can correct me if I'm wrong, 10. It is not my understanding of this board, this board hears applications where there are properties outside of the sewer service area. Therefore, I think there's a sincere question as to whether this application in its present form can go forward with 10 lots of 198 currently outside a sewer service area unless one of two things occurs. One, the applicant comes back with an amended application with the 10 lots removed from the application itself, putting all the lots in the sewer service area, or the applicant waits until it receives approval from DEP for those 10 lots, and comes back for the 198. But what's not something that we would recommend is that this be a condition of a potential approval pending the outcome of such. This application is already problematic at its best, and Mr. Hay may or may not have additional comments to make separate apart, but at least on that issue, folks, I think that renders a significant problem relative to the application currently before the board.
And I think also what muddies the waters, this is part of the settlement agreement, and I believe the number of-
That, that, that's a whole nother separate issue.
Right, and I'm just saying it just muddies because there's a calculation involved.
What is before this board, with 198 units subdivision, of which only 188 are sewer service, it is an issue.
Mr. Chairman, I might just add, I want to also add the fact that, you know, in addition to the sewer service area, we're, I really haven't seen the evidence of response from Hillsborough Township Sewerage Authority, nor am I seeing it from the San Francisco Valley Sewerage Authority in terms of comments that you would typically see with sanitary sewer area amended. You know, it, it is problematic at best with that, and that, that needs to be shown, because usually when you increase capacity for a sewer service area, there are obviously capital improvements that are associated with that, that the township needs to look at, that the Sewers authority needs to look at, and there has to be concurrence. In addition to just the sanitary sewers area, we also have an issue, which I discussed with, with Mr. Maskey about, with respect to the stream corridor and transition area averaging. And in relationship with that, one of the things that was admitted in some of the memorandums that we received and reviewed, trees and tree replenishment, which is part of the Township ordinance in terms of mitigation, would also have to be addressed as part of the transition area averaging, as well as the stream corridor averaging, and we don't have any definitive numbers on that amount as well. There could be an opportunity to move waivers. If we had more definitive answers from DEP as to what they're going to allow, then that would at best probably allay concerns about tree mitigation, and whether or not there'd be waivers sought. In my estimation, my recommendation, talking to Mr. Maskey, you know, it would also potentially eliminate 15 homes if, let's say, a transition area averaging and a stream corridor averaging would not be accounted for, would not be allowed. So that's problematic as well, and I would believe that that would just further reduce the amount of homes that would be proposed in this application. I don't have any issue, and I will put on the record, with some of the information I had drawn and reviewed with respect to the Phase 1. I don't have any issues with that, because whatever has to be done has been signed off by an LSRB. I was pretty confident about that to begin with at the last application, but in light of some of the things that I've asked for, the water has been addressed, the sewer has not, and I find that extremely problematic. And I think not having DEP application, and understanding of what type of tree mitigation there is, as well as an acceptance of DEP, that could further hinder this application. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Or is the, is the sewage issue, are those homes in the stream corridor as well, or?
It's, it's, it's really, they're, they're two separate issues, and, you know, you really can't equate both of them. They, they both have to be handled at the same time, because recall that if you go ahead and increases, you have a sewer service area, you don't look at the environmental effects of, you know, a sewer service area. Now, you, it looks like on the map that was taken into account, but that's something that the applicant, the burden is on the applicant to see if that, their amendment will be allowed, that has to go through the municipal utility authority, and then it has to go through the regional utility authority.
Yeah, I mean, I was just wondering, was there a problem because of that? One thing had nothing to do with the other.
It's two separate issues. When we look at these issues, they are, I mean, you really, as, as, you know, as Mr. Bernstein said, it, it is a major issue. I do not see applications that go through without a sewer service area being accepted, because we need to understand what those capital improvements are. This board needs to understand those, because it could affect the municipal right of way, and it could affect the application, so.
Right, and then the buffer averaging, and the stream corridor, I mean, that's a, that's a whole, that's another issue, but again, it's something that has to be addressed.
If they were outside of that, that's still an issue that has to be addressed. I mean, the fact is that the applicant stated in their response that there would be a number of trees that would have to be planted per DEP, I want to say, direction. And that could affect the Township ordinance, and it would be good for the board to know that there's a potential for a waiver to be sought, or waiver to be eliminated. We can't evaluate that until obviously the transition averaging is completed, and the stream corridor, I want to say waiver is sought, or it's, could be eliminated. So I can't really tell you that until DEP gives some type of approval.
Yeah, understood, thank you.
David, you want to add in?
Todd is covering it up.
Todd's got it all over here, okay. Need the ball win to your court.
Want me to respond? And I disagree with almost everything, as a legal matter, with Mr. Hay said, and I disagree in part with what Mr. Bernstein said. There is no requirement with regard to whether it's sewer service, or septic, or subdivision. You can hold up COs, or even maybe perhaps building permits, but there is no requirement for that to be done as part of the subdivision plan. And insofar as that's my position, if I disagree with my lawyer, colleague, and friend, Mr. Bernstein, so be it. If you want to go forward and excise those lots from the application, that's your right, you have the right to do that. I think that would be a mistake, but you are the board, you are the ones that get to do that, not me, and we'll do, we have to do, if anything, thereafter. This idea, and I keep hearing this, about the DEP this, and the DEP that, the DEP is the DEP. They decide these issues, not the local board. And the way the land use law has been constructed, and it's been this way for 50 years, is the application is heard before this board, if it's, if it's consistent with whatever's required by ordinance, or in this case, court order, it's approvable, and it's subject to county approval, and it's subject to DEP approval. It may in other cases be subject to DOT approval, or DRCC approval. But that's the way it goes. We are at the bottom of the food chain. You decide subject to. And if DEP says you've got an unrestricted access, unrestricted right to build, because it's been a cleanup, or are the, the wetlands averaging is okay with us, like, like it or not, you're stuck with that. Now, if they change something, if Mr. Hay is correct, and he's concerned that there are going to be problems with the DEP approval, and they say, yeah, Mr. Hay was correct, you know, this stream corridor buffering, we don't buy what you're proposing, you have to change it, well, we understand what happens next, is we got to come back, and that's the way the law works, because you go first, and the county and the state go second. And once that's done, if a requirement has, is to be changed, then shame on us, but we got to come back and make the change, and that's what we'll do. So we have done our best to do, and answer, and respond to questions normally far beyond the jurisdiction of a local board, because we're not trying to be combative, we're trying to be cooperative. And I think that, you know, you know my, my boss, my, the applicant, they are going out of their way to try to do what's necessary. They're trying to comply with the court order, as I know you are, and we have essentially a conforming application and a concept plan that, that you designed with us and attached to the court order.
Well, I mean, we're not going to say that the township's not taking any responsibility for the design. This is a proposal that your intervenors go to the courts, you know, to saying, we can do your affordable housing with all this extra market rate, and what I, right now, where I find is problematic, and I'm sure Eric will stop me when I get too far down the road, I know that there's a court settlement, and contingent in that is the number of, of market rate, you know, homes being built is driving, or maybe it's the other way around, the affordable housing. And if we don't know that number, because things are a percentage, you know, how COs are being, you know, issued between these, you know, two or three different applications-
Mr. Chairman, we are so far away from COs, we're-
I know we're far from COs, because you right now have 10, you got at least 10 houses, I can't get one, so-
And I'm sorry I'm interrupting you, but the agreement that negotiated by your attorney and me and the court specifically said, this is the concept plan, and you insisted on putting in the agreement that if we deviate from that concept plan, it's no good. So I'm not asking to take responsibility-
Mr. Wilson, and I apologize for interrupting, but since-
Go ahead, Eric, no problem.
The settlement agreement called for a number of units significantly larger than what you're proposing here. You came to this board with a partial application, because you had no sewer service approval for the other piece. In addition, as far as I'm aware, and Mr. Maskey corrected me, you don't have an application before the board at this time for the development of the affordable housing piece, which is required by the settlement agreement. But that's separate apart from this issue. This issue was sold to the court, because you could build on it, because it was in the sewer service area. Well, part of it isn't, and that's the issue.
Yeah, I'm going to respectfully interrupt you. The agreement does not say that. It says specifically a max of units, and in the event that you can't build them, there's a proportionate decrease in the affordables. So we're not looking to-
No.
That's what it says.
There is no proportional decrease, there is no provision in the Fair Share Housing Center Agreement that's signed.
It's in the agreement. It's in the agreement.
Let me interrupt, everybody else is. The ordinance that was agreed, that was agreed to in the settlement agreement by the applicant specifically says, in the R88 district, the affordable housing obligation for the R88 district is 88 units. There's nothing in there about proportionals.
Well, that's one-
There's no 24%, 25%.
Hey, hey, that's one section, you're reading out of context.
I'm not reading out of context.
And by the way, we're not saying we won't do the 88. So what this discussion is-
You know, at the moment, you're not saying you're doing any of them.
What this discussion is, is are you going to let us go forward as you are obliged, in my opinion, to do, and hear and decide the application within the timeframe that's required? We have bent over backwards to provide you with information that, in my experience, no other board has ever asked for, because it's beyond their jurisdiction, and we did it with a smile, because we're trying to be good neighbors, we're trying to be, you know, good applicants, we want to do what you want, we don't want to be combative, but you're not letting us go, you're not letting us start.
I don't think asking for environmentals, I don't think asking for sewer service area, I don't think asking anything that we did was above and beyond what we ask any other normal applicant, all due respect, sir. But what we are concerned about is, unlike any other application, that we have potentially issues, A, with units that may never get sewer service approval, that we have to design standards for, and B, that there are areas, environmentally sensitive areas, that we need to, to address, separate apart from each other. We were unaware of the last meeting that, and you didn't bring it to our attention, and we didn't understand, maybe missed the fact that there were significant homes, 10, that are in sewer service area. And that, as Mr. Bernstein said, you actually had an application that you bifurcated, we allowed you to do that, because you had no sewer service area for that section to this point. So I don't believe that we're asking for anything unfair, unprecedented. I think that we're asking for a complete buildable lot, where we know that when we approve this, that everything that we approve will be done. So right now, that's not 100% accurate, unless you can find a way of getting sewer service area for 10 units. Or 10 or 12, whatever, no, I'm sorry. So I don't know how you wax poetic that that's going to happen, you are 100% think that it's going to happen, whether you're willing to go on your own risk of that happening, I don't know what you're going to say, but-
That's exactly right, Mr. Chairman. It is our call, and we are going forward with the risk. Subdivision can go forward, you can grant subdivision of those lots, conditioned upon no COs being given, or even no building permits being given unless it's ultimately in the sewer service area. That's the way it should be done under the law. If you don't like that, I don't think the law would prohibit you from excluding those lots from the subdivision application, and leaving them unsubdivided pending a further application. I wouldn't like that, I don't think that's the most efficient way of spending your time or hours, but you could do that. And I mean, other than that, you're basically saying- And I mean, other than that, you're basically saying, don't come back until you have your DEP approvals. And that, we all know, is not legal.
No, we're not doing the DEP, but I mean, well, we keep finding at every hearing that there's some deficiency in here. I mean, it feels like no one's doing their
Well, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I disagree with that.
Well, how, how, no, 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 I'm going to stop. I'm going to interrupt now. It's my turn. How do you not identify these 10 properties that are not in the sewer service area? That's, that's dumbfounding to me. Two months ago, you were here. And now, we're finding, now through our investigation, we, we find that out? We find it out? You're the applicant.
We didn't find it out. We marked them on the plan. We, we disclosed that to you, and you say the hearings, it's only been one hearing. And you're right, it was not marked on the plan then. We marked it on the plan well before tonight to indicate that those were, those were issues of lots outside the subdivision. And for me, as a lawyer who practices in this area all the time, to me, this is a no-brainer. This is either you, you condition it on approval by the DEP and you bar COs, so no house can be built there or building permits, or you carve it out. This is not a big hurdle.
No.
Now, you seem to make it, you want to make it into a big hurdle.
Well, because, because being an intervener, you, you sold a very, you know, pretty package to the courts, which you, right now, you can't even, you're not
We are, we are an applicant, contract purchaser on a piece of property.
And you're an intervener on, on the township's affordable housing plan.
We were an intervener in a case that's over.
Right.
And now we are an applicant before you, subject to a court order and a settlement agreement that does provide for this eventuality. But we don't have to go there yet. We're not anywhere near that problem. So at the end of the day, what should, in my view, happen here, subject to chair's discretion with advice of the board and your professionals, is you should let us put our case on. And if we satisfy the conditions that are necessary to get a preliminary approval, it should be granted. And you should impose the appropriate conditions that we get DEP approval. We get a 208 amendment that those, is necessary for those lots, or they won't get built. And, and we get whatever other DEP or county approvals are required as conditions. And then we go through resolution compliance, which is what we do in every town, everywhere in New Jersey, including And when we comply with all those conditions, we're deemed in compliance and we get perfected. And that's the way I think this should work.
No, no, but when we approve plans or, or applications, we don't have this many questions hanging up in the air. It's usually DEP's approval is more of a formality, I feel that.
That's not, Mr. Chairman, that's not correct. DEP takes forever to do things.
Don't, I'm not saying how long they take to do things.
They're always long after the local approval. And I have personally, on many occasions, had to come back to planning boards, hat in hand, tail between my legs, because DEP made us do a change that required a change in the site plan or the subdivision. And that's our risk going forward to do that.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I suggest since we
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the floor's yours.
Obviously, I don't think this application's going to end tonight. We have the engineer here. We have the public here. Maybe we let the public finish the questioning of the engineer, and then when they come back again, God knows when it's going to be, we have some answers on the 208 and, and the other things, so at least we'll continue on that part. Is that okay?
I'm in favor, Mr. Mayor, of anything that lets us move forward.
Okay. So let the public, since they're here, since it's been three months that they've been waiting for you to bite this apple, let them have that point.
Chairman, if I just may, just before we get to that point, just for a matter of context perspective, we're talking about 10 units not being in the sewer service area, but we're really talking about 192. Keep in mind, as you said, this was bifurcated. The, the original settle agreement was for 380 units. They came back, said, all right, well, we, the eastern track, which we, which everybody knew was not in the sewer service area, but they were pretty certain they could get that through DEP. That has not happened yet, so they bifurcated the application. So now we're down from 380 units to 190 or so units out of the 380 that are in the sewer service area. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Well, which, you know, that doesn't, you know, personally
And we're talking, and we've heard comments that there's a, that's, there's a supposed proportionality, which, so we've gone from 380 down to roughly 190. If we're going to do some proportionality, what happens to the 88 affordables?
Right. Now, the proportionality, let's, it's is the affordable housing units being driven by the number of market rate units?
Yes. Now, yes, read the agreement, Mike, Dave.
I will, and I read the zoning ordinance to you. It says 88.
The agreement says if you don't have a certain number of units before it will go down. By the way.
Mr. Chairman, we have not said we won't do the 88. I'm just saying that
We don't have an application for these.
The agreement contemplates it, which gives us the authority, I believe, to proceed, as the mayor had suggested.
Well, I'm going to throw, I want to throw a hypothetical at my attorney.
Okay.
That if
I don't answer hypotheticals.
Okay. Well, what could occur with half of these units that were part of the agreement are approved to be built, and the other half never can materialize? Could the intervener go back to the courts and say, I'm only going to build 44?
They could. The township could. Fair share housing could. Anybody else potentially could. That's on the list of, about here. Of course, we don't even have a plan for whatever the number of affordable housing units are, which is supposed to be part of this application, whatever that number is, that's yet to be determined. Because we disagree also to some extent on when the timeframe is for that, but leaving that aside. We'll get to that later. I would concur with the mayor's suggestion that the public, that the public question the engineer, and then we will move on to wherever we go.
So the board is completely protected, because it can make a condition of any approval that the, that the affordables get done. The paragraph on page three of the settlement agreement says, "For any amount of market rate units less than 380 units, M&amp;M's obligation to construct the affordable housing units on the Sherman Track Phase Two will be reduced by proportion amount." That's in the settlement agreement. That's part of the court order. So, and we're not saying we're going to do that, because we're ultimately convinced as to what's going to happen.
That, that is very disheartening, because, no, because I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but you guys are, are very experienced, and certainly, you know, your boss is by no means, you know, wet behind the ears. I cannot believe that you guys went in as intervenors promising 325 whatever unit.
80.
80 in exchange for building 88 affordable housing units, and you didn't do your homework that you know you can't build it already?
Mr. Chairman, this subject matter specifically was the subject of discussions with Mr. Bernstein and me and Judge Miller and Beth Van Ness. This is not a surprise to the town.
Yeah, it is.
That you can't build half of what you promised to the courts?
Mr. Chairman. This issue was discussed. The specific nature of it was discussed. The failure that 208 planned to include it was discussed. And the issue was, was raised and discussed and debated.
What is the issue that was discussed? That you couldn't build what you promised the courts?
That we needed 208 amendment, which the DEP would be able to say yes or no to. And that's why that provision was negotiated into that agreement.
Go ahead. We're going to go back to the issue of the engineering, because I really don't want to have this discussion, because frankly, that version is a very interesting version, but not necessarily the truth. There were promises made to the court and the special master that the project could be built as agreed to, not it was conditioned upon. So, but I want to move forward, because we're not even going to get to that problem just yet.
We have to
We're at the boards.
To the engineer for questions based on his testimony.
All right, and just to remind, should we re swear in, or?
Witness is still under oath.
Okay.
Motion open.
I may add motion, so we have a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor.
So for the public, if your memory allows, you can question the engineer on his testimony from the July 28th meeting? Yes? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And obviously, it's 9:30, so.
No, we, we go till 10:30. No new testimony after 10 o'clock.
Just to give people time for
So if anyone would like to question this witness on any aspects of the engineering, you can come forward, state your name and address for the record. And again, I will also, if the engineer feels that's not his area of expertise, just feel free to state so, and, and, you know, who would the appropriate professional
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Susan Gull, Ford Hunt Club Road. I'm having a lot of trouble because of this three-month lag here, looking at my notes. You said you had eight bio-retention basins with 110 test pits?
Yes.
Okay. The test pits, is that the depth from the car? I, I was looking at my notes. You had put in 10 feet of fill or will be putting in 10 feet of fill?
I don't know the exact amount of fill, the depths, the, they found rock at depths of 1.5 to 10 feet, but there'll be fill throughout the site.
Okay, because I was wondering, when you did your test pits, is that done from, from where the land is or on top of the dirt that's brought in when you count your depths?
It's, it's from the depth at the time that the test pits were performed.
Which was before the dirt, before the 10 feet of dirt or whatever amount it is?
I'm not sure what in 10 feet of dirt was brought in. I don't think it was.
Existing.
Existing grade, yeah.
Mr. Hourback.
Sorry. Existing grade.
Existing.
Correct.
Bringing in the 10 feet of fill later, would that affect your stormwater management design results?
Our stormwater management design results take into account the proposed grading plan, which includes any fill that's brought onto the site.
Okay. Had you also, were you also the person who mentioned the tree replacement?
I did discuss that.
I had that under your name, but, you did discuss it, okay. The tree replacement, I, I thought you had said you, I thought your number was zero for some reason.
Based on the ordinance, we are providing street trees, but the street trees don't count as part of the tree replacements. So the, at this point, the amount of trees being proposed is zero, based on that.
You're sticking with zero replacement?
At this point, that's what the plan is. Yes, we are, all of the areas that are available for tree placements are encumbered by DEP areas.
Okay, and I have a note that says mine reclamation soils are being brought onto site. Is that some of your fill?
I don't know the, my area of expertise is not the soil that's brought up to site.
Okay, because I had a question about the rating of that type of soil, but that's not yours. Okay, thank you.
Why don't you have a seat, Mr. Wilson, and he can use the mic on the stand, okay?
David Fritz, 137 Flanders Drive. I have a lot of questions, and I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Mr. Fritz, raise the mic up if you could, because the people in the back won't be able to hear you.
All right.
Thank you.
So I did watch the video. So what you have described up there, let's go back to the tree replacement. You said zero trees are going to be replaced?
At this point, yes.
And you're going to do a tree averaging in terms of cutting them out for the construction?
There was a tree averaging plan that was prepared and that was submitted to the board.
All right. So, and your ordinance requested an increase from 20% to 25%?
Or some Our, our request at the last meeting was, was over 20%, and once we looked at the tree removal
Mr. Wilson, you're blocking the camera.
The tree removal, based on the latest limited disturbance, we are now down to 18% tree removal.
So the areas that are green there have no trees. And there's one tree down there at the bottom in the middle of the screen. If you tree averaged all of that, you can't touch anything that's up above or in the stream corridor. So you're essentially going to clear cut everything that's behind coals and loaves. And down into the other stream, if you continue moving it down towards this, the bottom section, there's a stream that cuts through between the, the two parcels.
So for our, I'm sorry.
So there aren't any trees in that area that is in pink and where those two roads are going, and there's a big hill where the circle of houses are associated. Up there at the top, there are no, there are a bunch of trees on the side of the hill. You're intentionally going to take all of those out and clear the hill. I'm assuming you're moving earth to do that?
I'm not sure of your questions. Your question regarding removal of trees in the Hillsborough Township Stream Corridor or just tree removal?
Tree removal. So if you're doing average tree removal and you're taking in the entire lot, where your building doesn't have a significant number of trees, except for on the borders with the other residential properties?
Correct.
So if you tree averaged, you could literally clear cut everything where you're intending to build the houses up to the property line of the residence and leave everything else alone. Is that the intention?
No. The, the tree removal calculation was based on a sample area that is within a forested or a tree area. We did not take into account all the areas that are not forested now. So basically, a tree removal plan was prepared based on a tree sample of an area that has trees in it. So it's not, it's not as if we took the wide open areas that don't have trees and that skewed everything in one direction.
So where the white line is, there is a canyon that goes down up to the stream bed. That's approximately 25 feet in depth and probably about 30 feet wide. And on the plan, you intend to backfill that entire area.
Are you
I'm referring to
With this area here?
And going down where the dotted white line is.
This one here?
Yes.
This is the property line.
That's the property line. That property line is a big canyon. And so what you've got demarcated there is a 30-foot wide, 20-foot deep canyon. That's a wetlands in the stream. And on your design, you intend to fill that in.
Well, you, you indicate it's a wetlands. It's not a wetlands per DEP OI. That is part of the project, so yes, there will be fill work being done there and the trees will be removed.
In the spring, it is wetlands. There is a huge standing pool of those trees, and this is the only year in the last 30 years that it hasn't
Mr. Chairman, this is argumentative and it's testimony. It's not wetlands under the DEP and our OI. So questions are okay, but this is not the time for testimony.
Well, my question would be, you intend to take all the trees out of that area and fill it in. Where's the dirt coming from that you're filling again?
I don't think that has been determined yet.
Okay. Other questions? All of your test pits, when you dug them, they immediately filled up with water. So
Is that a question?
So I'm just telling you. The question is
That's testimony.
The question is, what kind of mitigation are you going to be doing for the water base and water level? So at the state level right now, there's a requirement for increasing foundations above the flood plain. And it hasn't passed through legislature yet. If it does pass, you're six feet below flood plain, 100-foot flood plain level on a lot of the
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. This is testimony. It's not questions of my engineer.
Well, it's all part of engineering.
I know, but
At the end of the meeting, he doesn't, don't, the public have the right to make whatever comments?
Eric.
Mr. Wilson is correct to the extent, sir, that you need to ask questions relative to the testimony that was provided.
Okay. So will the testimony
Also, what may happen a year from now, as far as changing of elevation, is not applicable to now. They are governed by the laws that are at the time of application, just so you know. They are governed by the laws at the time of application, just so you know.
So where's the data for the test pits?
Data for test pits is in our geotechnical investigation, which was submitted as part of the initial application.
And it's available to the public?
Yes.
How did we get that?
Civic clerk.
Okay. And was the soil samples also tested in the upper region?
The soil samples were tested as required to address the requirements of the DEP stormwater rules.
Okay. So we'll be able, we'll be able to see where the test pits were, what the soil sample assignment was? So every test pit had a stick out there with a designation?
Yes.
And so we'll be able...
Yes, there's, there'll be location maps of where the soil test pits were taken.
Okay. Was any indication done when IDA came through there as terms of the flood plain and the accuracy of the maps?
We are basing the flood hazard area calc on the verification that was approved by DEP.
So the answer would be then, no?
No, the... What the answer was.
So this, so last question. The, we went from 380 houses, well, originally it was 2,000 unit apartment complex throughout the entire area.
No, I have to, I'll even jump in there. That was never part of this application.
But, so we're now bifurcated down to 190. Is there any possibility of actually building a septic system out there so that the non-s sewer service areas could potentially be built?
We've done no studies on that aspect. We don't know that they can, but we don't...
I mean, based on what we found out tonight, I know they didn't. So don't worry about it.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this on?
You're on.
You're on.
Just got to get, just got to...
You've got to get real close to it.
Just got to speak close to it.
Okay. Michelle Conklin, 3 Aldrin Court. My question for the engineer, my understanding is you're building eight retention basins to mitigate flooding within the development. I've been living in the area for 17 years, and the surrounding streets in that area, for example, Sunnymead Road is one of the first streets to close down due to flooding whenever we get a heavy rain. And also, Hamilton Road is subject to flooding. My husband happens to work for PSE&amp;G, so every time there's a heavy rain, he's out working, and there are times that he has not been able to get home because the streets are just impassable due to flooding. So my question is, does your plan address the surrounding flooding in the streets, which is already heavy? And if we're building houses and taking down trees, it's going to just be worse. Are there any plans? I mean, this would be a cost to the town if they have to do street improvements and bridges to get over the new floodwaters.
For this project, we are meeting the DEP requirements for stormwater measure for our project itself. And one of the, we have to adjust water quantity where we are in these basins, we're holding the water back and letting it out slower than it goes in the existing condition.
So it only takes into account the property that you're on and not the surrounding street? Is that a correct understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I add just one thing to report in vacation? As I said before, I'll say it again, the applicant has shown that they are meeting the 210, 100-year attenuations for water quantity. Those have to be verified by the DEP, as the DEP will have the chance to review that and report back to us. I do not take any issue with the stormwater management plan that the applicant has provided. In light of the initial information we've provided, there are some items that do have, there are more housekeeping items that have to be addressed, but at this time, I have no other issues with the stormwater management. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're building this development on an old mining site, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Was this mine backfilled?
Not yet.
Okay. Are you doing a soil compaction test on any of that property, being that it has been backfilled? Or, you know, now I'm not making testimony, I'm asking you a question. Do you know or do you not know if that property was backfilled?
I don't believe it was backfilled.
The portion off the back of loaves?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Can you research that or can the board, because it was backfilled? I don't want to add testimony. That mine was backfilled. It was a mine. With that being said, are you going to do a soil compaction test so in 10 years the people that buy these houses aren't sitting crooked? What, how many square foot of soil compaction are you going to do?
No, no, to the engineer. No one in the audience.
Okay, well, I hear, I hear a voice behind you.
I know, and if he does, we're going to bring him up and sort him in.
We'll do a compaction test, then it's reward.
Okay. If there's additional flooding on Sunnymead Road by the railroad tracks, are they going to be liable?
No.
Are you going to be liable?
You're not, you're not providing testimony.
I'm sorry, the engineer, are you going to be liable for any additional water flow?
That was a legal question, not an engineering question. It is peculiarly within my sphere of expertise.
Well, then, then the engineer should say, that's a legal question, I can't answer.
Okay, how can that be to where you guys are liable for additional flooding that the town would have to take care of?
That's a legal question.
On you.
Mr. Kralovich, we're here asking the engineer.
Just engineer.
I understand. All right, so basically, you, as a question, you're not 100% sure what was backfilled in that mine, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can that be found out?
Yes, we already answered yes to that.
Okay. When will it be found out?
We'll do the research and provide to the planning board. I don't know exactly when.
Okay, can, will that, can you provide that to the planning board before your next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had another issue. I did have a chance to review all the environmental issues that were contained in the report. I do not see anything that is a major issue that may affect the town. There was discussion just previously concerning any type of fill issues. Any type of fill issues that have been indicated have most likely been taken care of by the licensed site remediation professional that was indicated within the memorandums provided by the applicant. I don't see any issues beyond the no further actions and also remedial action outcomes that were provided. If I do see anything that I feel that we need to bring to the board's attention, I would like to reserve the right to provide additional comment for any type of compliance, but I would like to remind the board, I don't see any issues that would impact anything with respect to the residents of the town.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
For the people not, so with Mr. Hay saying, there was a, before they took over the LSRP is basically a licensed remediation, Mr. Hay, correct? And he testified or proved that the place was clean and he...
Yes, Mary, just to educate the public, yeah, basically, a licensed site remediation professional has the leeway and the guidance of the DEP to essentially issue what's known as, what was previously a no further action to close any ground, and that being soil issues as well as groundwater issues. There's been no indication that there's anything beyond the previous no further actions and also the remedial action outcomes issued by the licensed site remediation professional. If there are any stipulations, we'll basically put those stipulations in as part of compliance, but it's more or less guidance in terms of what's done during construction, because this applicant, this would be a major earthmoving operation, and they'll have to abide by those guidance to simply keep in context with the no further action as well as remedial action outcome. Again, I really don't see that being much of an issue.
I'm going to take exception to Mr. Hay because I don't understand what he just said. Do we actually have a copy of this LSRP report that we've been made available?
It's on civic clerk.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. They were all provided on dis sum luminous amounts of material, what have you. I really researched the outcome and the conclusions, because at the end of the licensed site remediation professionals' evaluation, there are conclusions, and those conclusions evaluate what's known as areas of concerns. Those areas of concerns have been addressed. If there has been a remedial action outcome accepted by the state DEP, that is a closure in my mind. As far as what has to be mitigated during that, the engineer will have to know what the mitigation is, put that into his plan, and that can be provided as part of compliance if this board is to entertain any type of application approval.
Your name, sir, I'm sorry?
Craig Herman.
Mr. Herman, are you aware of a February 23, 2022, letter from RTP Environmental Associates sent to Mr. Mark Moore?
I am not the LSRP on the project, so no, I'm unaware of that letter.
But we're talking about soil contamination. Are you aware that benzopyrene was tested and exceeds state New Jersey residential soil remediation standards?
Again, I'm the civil engineer, I'm not the licensed site remediation professional.
Are we going to have the LSRP testify?
No, we have a site-wide RAO that says we're clean. We've taken care of every problem. And Mr. Hay, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, I believe has agreed that that has been done.
So I don't understand how, if there are exceedances of residential standards, that an LSRP can report that there is no issue? And that includes beryllium exceeding residential, mercury exceeding residential?
David, I'm sorry, I got to interrupt because it's questioned. You've got, and I'm not trying to dismiss what your concerns are, but it's not at this point of the public hearing. You may want to take issue with the agency that issued the permit if you feel that they issued the permit in question. Unfortunately, that permit has been issued, and I don't...
I'm going to say, I don't know that it's a permit as much as when an LSRP does the work, they step into the shoes of some state official, basically, to verify, and they sign their name to something that says it's okay, right? Well, let me ask a different question, because we were left off with a whole bunch of different environmental concerns from last meeting, and there was testimony with regards to this question of fill. And I guess, Mr. Herman, you're saying you're not aware of any fill having gone onto the property. Is that a correct statement?
That's what I testified to you earlier.
So I know the Environmental Commission talked about this, and I guess my question is, are you aware that over, I think, 600,000 cubic yards of material for reclamation was deposited on this property?
Again, same as before.
I'm a little bit confused. You're the engineer responsible for this development, correct?
Site design.
For the site design. And part of the site design is to do an analysis of the actual ground with regards to its suitability and the nature of, as was indicated, the soil materials. Is that correct?
As a civil engineer, I take the grades as it is, and then I work out what I need to do for the site development, site lands.
If you do not know what's there, how do you do that effectively? In the form of the materials that are there? If you don't know about 600,000 cubic yards of material, how do you actually go and plan? Because this is imported material. This is not the indigenous material that's there because of the fact that this was a mine.
In coordination with the LSRP, where they take care of material that needs to be brought into the site or material that's on the site.
And, and just to make sure I understand this, are you aware of a company called International Bio Solutions?
Again, I'm not the LSRP on the site, so no.
No, I'm not saying that. I just wanted to know because of the, they were involved with bringing in some of these materials that you're looking at for building upon. How about Applied Waste, Applied Water Management? Are you familiar with that organization?
Same answer, no.
Okay.
Not the LSRP on the site.
Yes or no?
Okay.
That's fine. With regards to the 208, are you involved with this 208 plan?
Yes.
And there is an application that's been made to the DEP with regards to sewer service area?
Yes.
Is that 208 review also including Raritan Valley Sewage Authority?
They will be involved in the final process of getting the TWA, so yes, they will be involved with it.
But I guess my question to you is, has anybody contacted Raritan Valley Sewage Authority to indicate whether they have capacity within the treatment plant should you get approval?
I believe so, yes.
I'm sorry, believe so what, yes?
Yes.
That, that you've been in contact with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is that 208 process subject to public hearing, public comment that you're aware of?
It's a submission to DEP, so it's available to the public. I'm not sure of the actual hearing process, but it is available for public. It's submitted to the DEP.
And that's for just the eastern portion, or are you seeking to get sewer use area on the 10 lots that you do not have sewer capability on?
10 lots. It's included, 10 lots are included.
Okay, they are included. And just to go back over a number of the environmental concerns that were raised at the last meeting, are those going to be addressed tonight? Is there going to be some discussion? Because I believe the meeting was somewhat adjourned because of lack of information, which we did not hear about.
The answer is no testimony, other than what you heard from Mr. Hay in conjunction with our submission to answer all the questions and concerns that were raised.
Mr. Julian asked a series of questions at the last meeting, which we didn't get answers to.
We've applied all those answers in writing more than, I think, two weeks ago to the board and its professionals, and they have reviewed it. And as I understand, again, not wanting to put words in Mr. Hay's mouth, he has taken no issue with those responses.
But we reserve the right to call any witness back if we have questions.
Of course, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just to add to what I had stated before, engineering controls with this project would have to be part of the project and part of what the applicant's site designer would have to look at. Anything that we indicate in the compliance letter in our final letter, we would do that. I'm quite sure the applicant would be able to comply with that and also at least attest to that in terms of, you know, when the engineering, when actually the earthmoving is done. I don't see that being problematic and that being something that can be stipulated in any type of final letter. Again, as I mentioned before, yes, there was a variety of different issues. We did not have the information. Information was provided to us. I don't have an issue with it. Seeing much larger projects than this and much more complex projects, and I can tell you that there's engineering controls, the applicant shares the burden of doing that, and the board has the right to at least have the applicant acknowledge what those controls will be in place so that they have a better understanding of what's going to happen. As far as I'm concerned, with respect to some of the other issues we've brought up, about the sanitary sewer area, yes, part of the review showed that there was contact made with the regional sewers authority, Suburban Valley Sewers Authority. As you know, I'm very familiar with that sewers authority, but I will tell you that they will not do any reviews until the sanitary sewer area amendment is done. Once they do that, they will look at it, review it, and then they will talk about whether or not there is adequate capacity and that there will be any type of additional mitigation that this applicant will be able to undertake. So we don't know what that is, but really, at this point, the applicant has made modified effort to reach out to the sewers authority.
Thank you.
Merrill Bisberg, 4 Hickory Hill Road.
Merle Bisberg, 4 Hickory Hill Road. Maybe a little more of a process issue, but having attended the Environmental Commission meeting Monday night, at which time several materials were received from O&M quite recently. I, what I'm wondering is...
Merle, the questions to the applicant, I mean, the witness, it's not a process time for discussion.
All right, I would just like to be able to come back up after, on the idea that you may have more questions as a result of receiving those materials.
Everyone will get a chance once the applicant, you know, has rested their case, and before we make a decision on the application, the public has one last bite at the apple where they can basically express their, you know, the opinion for or against, and that would be a point if you want to bring up the process.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I would think that the committee would have more questions tonight as a result of having received those materials, which are subsequent to the last meeting, it was reasonable.
Well, the reason is, Merle, is that we stopped at the last meeting going with questions for the engineer, so we have to pick up where we left off. So, once that's over, we have to go to the next process.
Well, but on top of that, I mean, I think we've, we've heard from our professional, which is, you know, kind of carries obviously significant weight with the board here, you know, that they reviewed those materials that were part of the, of the discussion. So, we're, I think you've heard from, from the board's representative about what those materials look like and what they've, that they've answered the questions that were raised last time.
Right, thank you.
David Brooks, 7 winding way. Mr. Herman, when you began working on this property, can you tell us what year you began working on this property?
Yes, I've been working on this property since 2019, I think, 2020, somewhere near, I don't recall the exact date.
Okay. And did you conduct any kind of due diligence or history analysis on what was done on the property as part of the work you did?
The applicant did, yes.
But the applicant, meaning you?
The applicant as a whole, yes.
Okay. What kind of history did you find on the property?
I don't have that report here.
Okay. But you have some kind of report that you're talking about that would indicate...
I have to look through our files.
I would say that's somewhat relevant, no?
No. Well, it's a legal question.
Okay, fine. So, are you familiar with the term metal life?
No.
Metal life is traded sewage sludge, apparently, that was deposited on the property with high levels of metals in them.
David, that's not a question of engineering.
Hey, can you help us here?
But my question is history, right?
But he's not, he's here to answer questions on his testimony about the engineering part of the site.
It's relevant to engineering to know what's on the property, what's on the soil layers.
I think he, and I'm sorry, I'm just going to get, I think he's already, you know, has answered that, that he had all the information that he needed to do as engineering. Unfortunately, you know, I understand where you may be coming from, but that's why they got the separate environmental study to perform.
I just wanted, I, I will, I will end. I just wanted to make sure. So, that's not a term you're familiar with, is that correct, metal life?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll state it again. The applicant is obligated to have engineering controls for any parts of this project that may affect the soil or even groundwater. And that, those should be stated as part of compliance. And again, I take no issue with that, I believe the applicant won't have an issue supplying that and providing a little bit more clarification when they go through the compliance process.
So, just to help, because I know there'll probably be more questions, which of their professionals would be the most appropriate person to give us, you know, the idea, you know, the controls that would be in place or the details?
Well, that, that would be the licensed site remediation professional, because typically they're the ones that make decisions as to whether or not a site has to meet residential site standards, which is in terms of, and I'm talking about ground, and let's talk about soil for a minute. Soil, typically, there's capping requirements that are required if there is any type of material that was found to be in situ and it has to be covered, or if the material was removed. Then what happens is when an area of concern is addressed by a licensed site remediation professional, they state that and report that it was removed, and it's no longer an issue. The ground, different story, or the soil, excuse me, the groundwater is a different story. The groundwater would have to be monitored if there's an issue, and if there's any type of, let's say, biological or chemical processes that are required to mitigate any type of current groundwater situation, that would be stipulated and could also be part of the application resolution and stated, so that there's a better understanding by the board and the public that there may be something ongoing that has to be done, whether it's mitigation or monitoring.
And when, would it be reasonable for the board to actually have that information prior to taking an action?
Yeah, I, I believe that what could happen is the next time that the, and I had thought about this, that the applicant could look at anything that they would have to do, the licensed site remediation professional could review the plans and state that these are the controls that they believe that would be necessary. That's pretty much all they need to, to provide for me, for what I would want to see, so that if, let's say, you have inspections going on, there would at least be manifest that could be provided to the municipal site engineering inspection, and that we would note it would be, the work would be being completed in compliance with what the licensed site remediation professional stated. But, you know, for, for Mr. Herman's sake, I will tell you that, yes, he doesn't look at these types of plans blindly, I can tell you that. He has to be cognizant of that, but I think the right professional would be the LSRP. I think also, Mr. Chair, maybe it'd be a simple letter that could be stated, in terms he could bring it in, I could review it, and I could go over with the board. Really don't think it's, I don't want to say we want to make a mountain out of a molehill, but I can tell you that many sites in Hillsborough, Somerset County, it's required, and when it's required, yes, the board should know about it, but I think in this case, we're probably not going to see too many controls, and if we do, they'll be very atypical of a lot of these types of sites in the county.
We'll send that letter into you, Mr. Hay, well in advance of the next hearing.
Would it, would it be appropriate to have the LSRP here so the public can ask those questions? Because, I mean, Mr. Hay did review all of the issues that were brought up last time by the Environmental Commission, so that was done, but some of these other extraneous questions, you know, we're kind of unable to answer.
We're not planning on calling the LSRP, Mr. Chairman.
How about submitting those questions to Mr. Hay, and Mr. Hay will get them?
I mean, those are questions from the public that, you know... Yeah, I know, but I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know.
And if we have the questions, then, you know, we can convey those questions.
I don't have the answer, I'm just throwing it out there.
Maria Janusak, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. In regard to the agenda information on this application, it says that this is for Block 182, Lot 11.01, formerly Lot 11. What happened to Lot 9 of Block 182?
I don't think that's an engineering question.
We do this every week. We're on to the engineer, for God's sake!
This is, you can take that up tomorrow with the, with the planning office if you've got a question with the agenda. We're here to have...
It's not a question of the agenda, it's a question of, because I have a copy of the settlement agreement.
No, no, you, this is not the appro, Ms. Janusak.
And the property that is part of this application should also include Lot 9.
Ms. Janusak.
Why isn't Lot 9 included?
We're not answering those questions. Do you have a question of the engineer? That's where we're at, that this...
When, when can those questions be answered?
You could call Mr. Maskey's office tomorrow morning.
You don't have a copy of the settlement agreement, which documents the subject property.
Please call me, if you want, Ms. Janusak.
Okay, I have a letter here from, I have a letter here...
Ms. Janusak, is it a question of the engineer?
I believe so.
Then address it to the engineer.
Then address it to the engineer, don't look at me. You're asking him, Mr. Herman.
I'm not looking at anyone, I'm trying to look at the papers, if you don't mind. So, this is, this is a letter to John Hutchinson, Executive Director of the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, regarding a response to comments, Hamilton Road Residential Development, West Track, DR Delaware-Raritan Canal Commission, Application Number 21-4959C. It's from Paulus Sokolowski and Sartor LLC. It doesn't say what they do, but it's to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission.
They're engineers.
They are engineers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, on page two, it refers to the stream corridor. And under, under the second paragraph, it says, "It appears that the project may be proposing multiple intrusions within the defined commission's stream corridor area, area. Therefore, this project will be subjected to a stream corridor impact review as per NJAC Construction of new structures, regating, and removal of vegetation are all considered to be prohibited, uses in accordance with NJAC 7:45-9.3A." So, commission staff will require additional information for the review of a stream corridor waiver request. Was that provided to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, to Mr. Hutchinson?
At this point, no, we're working on that response.
That has not been provided?
No, yes.
Okay. On page three, it states, at the bottom of the page, "However, additional details on the sizing of the water quality measures needs to be provided. As such, it is unclear if the proposed stormwater quality measures have been designed in accordance with the requirements of NJAC 7:45-8.7." Were, were the, these proposed stormwater quality measures, was this, was this submitted to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, to Mr. Hutchinson?
Not yet, no.
Not yet. I believe this is page four. There's a big, big, big paragraph here regarding specific details on any proposed disturbances within the commission's stream corridor area associated with the unnamed tributary. Was anything provided to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission in accordance with what is stated in this, in this letter to John Hutchinson?
Not yet, no.
Nothing. The Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission has received nothing from you.
Not yet, we're still working on that, we're still coordinating.
And this all involves stormwater and permitted use in the, in the area, all of this, and nothing has been provided?
Yeah, it will be.
Obviously, something's been provided, Mr. Chairman, and she's got a zillion-page letter there, they're reviewing our information, they're asking for more, and we'll give it to them.
I just asked the gentleman, and he said it wasn't given.
He said nothing was given.
Nothing.
You think they got to review the letter?
All right, specific, specific...
I'm going to stop you two, I'm going to, please, Mr. Herman, do you want to re, do you want to restate your, your answer? Because your attorney just said that you were misspoken. You said, he said he didn't supply anything.
I objected to the question.
You said he didn't supply any...
Subsequent to the letter, and I said, obviously, they had something, which is why they wrote the letter. But so the answer, I objected to her question because she said nothing was submitted, and the answer is nothing's been submitted after the letter.
My understanding, you're asking for specific responses to those additional questions, and we have not provided those responses yet. We're still working with the Delaware-Raritan River Commission to address those items.
All right, I don't want to go through this item by item, but there are quite a few things in here that needed to be addressed.
And we will address them with the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just want to add to that, I mean, typically, what happens is when the DEP receives an land use regulation program application, the DRCC would have been probably notified. So, they probably don't have all the details, and just want to make sure that the board, you know, clarify that there's no, it's not really a smoke and mirror game going on here, I want to kind of situate and say that, but I'm going to have to, because I wanted the board to be educated that DRCC's probably got a notification, they didn't get all of the details, they have questions, probably in light of the new stormwater management regulations and the ones coming down the pike, and they probably want to comment no point on them. Again, they also know that the DEP is going to have final ruling, final say with that when permits are issued for both freshwater wetlands and transition area averaging plan, as well as any type of flood hazard act regulation that they've went ahead and submitted for too.
Thank you. Any other, we have one more.
Mr. Chairman, David Brooks, 7 winding way, point of order, if I may? You were discussing the LSRP. The public would like to hear from the LSRP, and I would ask if that person could be brought here, simply because we cannot offer questions to the LSRP in writing, and I would be very interested in hearing how this individual has reports of contamination above residential standards and somehow divined the land is perfectly good for building on.
You're leaning in, so you got to...
Oh, Mr. Chair, it's pretty, I mean, to me, even though, and I heard that the mayor had said earlier that there had been determinations made in 2015, any licensed site remediation professional could come up to the board and testify on behalf of the applicant and go ahead and stipulate what type of engineering controls could be done. That could be an option at the disposal of the board if the applicant chooses to do so. It's interpretation, but the interpretation typically went on a remedial action outcome, and it's really a track-wide remedial action outcome was provided, that could be disseminated and discussed, and those, that could be basically testified to, but it also could be written up so that it could be presented the next time by the applicant.
It strikes me that residential standards are stricter than what was out there as an industrially-zoned property, and institutional controls for residential units are not allowed unless you deed restrict the land. So, I don't see how you can do institutional controls on residential property for residential, okay? You can do it for industrial, you can do it for commercial, but you cannot deed restrict land under a house in some way if it's contaminated, DEP will not allow that.
We have an unrestricted RAO, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of the story. Mr. Hay has requested or suggested that we submit a letter from the LSRP that indicates what the controls will be, we've agreed to do that, we're not going to call the LSRP.
I don't think you get to choose that, I think it's the board that has to choose it, and I would ask that the public's... I would disagree with you, okay? You don't get to tell the board what to do. I would simply ask that the board consider having the LSRP here, it would protect the public and protect the buying residents of that property to assure everyone that this person...
Mr. Brooks, I just have to interrupt, I, I can understand, but again, you could bring that up, you know, at the end of the application process, we're at this point just asking questions of the engineer, their testimony. The board members are well aware, we could seek counsel, you know, or guidance, you know, what, what our abilities are, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? We've got about 15 minutes left, so, okay.
We have a short witness. We have one more short witness.
Yeah, no witnesses, it's after 10 o'clock. Sorry. I think we have one last.
Maria Janusak, 720 East Freck Avenue. Is there a transcript of the prior testimony so that we can know what questions we can ask the engineer? Do you have, is there available?
There's a video available.
On YouTube.
Video, is there a transcript?
Transcripts haven't been provided, I believe. I would, I would suggest looking at the YouTube video for expedience.
No, but I'm asking if there is a transcript of that public hearing with the testimony of the engineer, so that we can ask questions, because we would know what was, what was presented by the engineer.
Well, at this point, his testimony is going to be over, and we'll move on to the next witness after tonight.
And I just want to be on the record also, I agree with Mr. Brooks, that there should be a licensed, an LSRP here. If that is part of the normal process, I don't know why you're not allowing it, so I agree with him and... I agree with him, and I think that should also be done.
Mr. Chairman, just to remind the board, it's not part of the normal process in terms of planning boards, I've been before, 300 planning boards and zoning boards in the state, and worked with a lot of licensed site remediation professionals, I have probably eight of them work for me, and I can tell you, that is not the normal process. There is an understanding that the board has of that. The public needs to be educated. I think it's more of an educational session, if the, if the applicant's willing to provide that. I don't have a problem reviewing, you know, what the applicant's gonna provide and disseminating it, and making sure the board's educated, but again, no, it's not a normal process. Typically, the board does know the, does understand the engineering controls at the end of the application, and we're able to disseminate that and then make sure that that is employed. Some of the early comments I heard respect to, oh, making sure that, you know, homes are bought within the subdivision, no projects are allowed, no construction is allowed to go on, on any, and the building departments under UCC codes, New Jersey State Uniform Construction Code, do not allow for any homes to be built on contaminated properties. I can tell you that is just not simply allowed, and it's not simply allowed when you go and apply for any type of subdivision approval, or even for a construction of a single-family residence, or any residences in the state. So I'm, I'm trying to discuss this because I want the board to be educated that this applicant cannot do that, would not be allowed to do that, and the building departments just won't allow anything to happen without that being done.
Thank you, Mr. Hay. Mr. Chairman, if we can't put on other witnesses, because it's beyond the 10 o'clock hour, that concludes where we are for today.
Unless there's any more questions from the public.
What's next?
Mr. Chairman, the transcript is, is on civic clerk.
Is on civic clerk?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public?
So moved.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. We just have about 14 minutes left. Does any one on the board have any further questions with the engineer? Okay. So I guess from housekeeping rule, we need to carry this at some-
Yes, the next available meeting is December 1st.
Nothing on the agenda?
It's an empty agenda.
Yeah, we need an extension of time, Craig.
So it wasn't a long way out, Mr. Chairman, we have one minute left.
Yeah, you've got a lot of work, that's all the time we got, December 1st, is it?
I don't know that I have authority to consent to December 1st. We can put you in there as a, as a tenant, December 1st, when you can get back-
I know, but then we need to, time that we can't, you gotta make a call now.
No, I agree with the chair. I gotta talk to the board, because, you know, that's a, the agreement provides for special meetings.
If we want to go down, let's not, yeah, we're having that tonight, and if you want to start going down that path, I think you may need to go back to the courts to talk about the obligation that you signed up for, which I think we're starting to waver from, and we're gonna need clarification.
We've still got the 208 issue that you have to address.
Yeah, the 208 issue, are we gonna see an application for AD8 affordable housing? You got a lot. You've got a lot. Maybe December 1st would be a good time to come in with the AD8 affordable housing unit application, to see where we're at, because-
Mr. Chairman, I will make the call, I just can't hear the reporter of the information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll make those.
Microphone, sorry. Microphone. I can't hear in the back.
You're ready, Mr. Hay.
What I did say was that Chair has asked me to make the call now, which I agree with, it needs to be made, because you need the consent form signed, which I'm happy to sign if my boss tells me that's what he wants me to do.
Okay. So you need about five minutes?
Assuming he answers the phone.
Okay. I don't want to close the meeting until we, you know, okay.
Well, it's, it's alternative.